Good evening and thank everyone for being here tonight. We'll now officially call meetings ordered. Counselor London.
President.
Counselors Spivey.
President.
Counselor Bearden.
I'm back.
Counselor Wilson.
President.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from this pre-council and council meeting of August 17th? Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as submitted?
I'll make a motion if the reading of the minutes for August 17th, the suspensions that saw council members have received copies and that they be approved as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Counselor Spivey, do you approve the amendment of bills?
Sure. I would like to make a motion for the approval of the current bills for payment in the amount of $609,387.95.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? And now mayor's report. I think we have. Are you going to do your proclamation during this part?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a proclamation here regarding Family Day and Family Week coming up. Whereas the children are our future and society's greatest asset, whereas the cornerstone of an orderly society is the family, whereas the children who spend significant time with both their parents show lower risk of suicide, dropout, teen pregnancy, incarceration, drug abuse, whereas the widespread availability of illegal drugs from outside the state, increased local manufacture of illegal narcotics, and the growing problem of prescription drug abuse are all contributing factors to the increased drug concerns for Alabamians, especially teenagers, whereas children of concern and active parents are far less likely to exhibit risky and unhealthy behaviors such as smoking and drinking or using illegal drugs, whereas simple daily activities like sharing a meal, conversation, or a book can have enormous impact on the life of the child. Whereas Family Day in Alabama has grown to promote the importance of family interaction and connecting with kids throughout the day and the week. Whereas we encourage all Alabamians to visit C-A-S-A-F-FamilyDay.org. Now therefore, I Charles Warren, Mayor of the City of Irondale, am hereby proclaiming September the 25th, 2017 as Family Day and the week of September 24 through September the 30th, 2017 as Family Week in the City of Irondale, and encourage our residents to join together in observing this day and this week by spending time with their families and by engaging in appropriate ceremonies and the activities to honor and strengthen both our cities and our states' families. I present this to Joyce Frey and Exchange Club as its proponent.
Thank you very much.
So as a part, I don't know which way to turn, so if I go back to closer. Let me just say, we have several things that are coming up that I think are important for our residents to know about. Some others may be speaking in more detail, but let me give you a few dates. September on 9/11, and tell us, I'm assuming you'll talk about that in a moment.
Of course.
The ceremony coming up on 9/11 of September. September the 30th is Whistle Stop Festival. October the 3rd is National Night Out. We had a great National Night Out last October, and we're expecting even a better one this time. October 31st, we're doing something new here on this road, these couple blocks right here. We're having, for all the kids and the schools and the neighborhoods, we're having truck retreat, and all the city departments are going to be participating. Police, the fire, the library, the senior center, all public works, everyone's going to be participating, passing out candy and greeting the children. So we hope that you'll help spread the word on that. We are talking, we have not made a final decision yet, but we're talking about how we can have City Hall open five days a week. As I think most of you know, for a number of years, almost 12 years now, City Hall has been open Monday through Friday, I mean Monday through Thursday, closed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We're looking at trying to figure out how best to have it open so that we can be of better service to the residents throughout the work week. The council knows, I sent them a memo and I actually posted it on Facebook as well, talking about the sky is not falling, and I want to just kind of refer to that for just a moment. The eclipse did happen a week or so ago, but the sky didn't fall. And you know, when we talk about the trash and the garbage, and I know somebody who are here to speak to that, somebody that is here to speak to some of the other topics, I would encourage you just to remember the sky's still up there. It didn't fall on that Monday when we went to the new garbage ordinance, or the enforcement, really, of the existing garbage ordinance for the most part. I do want to remind you, not everything that you read on the internet is true.
You can say that again, Mayor.
Yeah.
You can say that again.
Not everything is true. Please don't believe everything, even for those who say it like it's true. So let me just remind you of a couple of things. There's been talk about pizza boxes, and there's been talk about kids walking down the street and putting their trash that they pick up on the street in the neighbor's trashcan. That would be nice if that actually happened, but I'm not sure that's happened yet. There's been talking about going to jail for the pizza box put in loose in the solo cup that you know that they threw in, and you're chuckling because you know how ridiculous that sounds, but somebody really said that, okay? I'm not making this stuff up. You can't make this up. But let me tell you what the facts are. There have been zero citations issued, not only in the last two weeks, but as best I can tell, in the last years. There's been zero garbage citations issued. Nobody has been fined, and nobody, most importantly, nobody's been incarcerated. So they're all okay. All your neighbors are good. If they're missing, it's not because they're in our jail. They're somewhere else. They probably wanted to get away from you for a little while and decided to go on. But here is what has happened. Even though your neighbor's not in jail, kids haven't put trash in the garbage can, no one's gotten fined for the pizza box. Here's what has happened, is there has been a noticeable improvement on our streets and in our neighborhoods and our communities. Frank, our public works director's been doing an outstanding job in helping us implement this and get things cleaned up and looking better, and there's more to come, I will give you that. But just riding through, you can notice the difference if you will look. Public work staff have spent the extra time in the last two weeks on Thursdays, because we had six people who didn't have to be riding on the back of a garbage truck picking up about a third of a route, because most people weren't putting it out on that second day. We've had them working on the sidewalks, we've had them trimming the overgrown grass on the sidewalks and the bushes that are hanging over the edges that some of you have complained about. We hear you, and we've put them to work doing that, picking up litter and keeping our rights of ways clean, and they've done an outstanding job on that over the last two weeks, and we expect more of that to come. My neighborhood, just as an example, my neighbor who, and I live in a small neighborhood, there's only about 15 houses in that neighborhood, so I get to see all of them, but we have one neighbor that just never thought to take his garbage can from the street to his house. Well, guess what? I looked this week and there's no concrete to that. Now, I didn't knock on his door, I didn't say anything to him before or after this ordinance enforcement, but I've noticed that just because we've implemented, he's made a change. He's made a proper change. He didn't go on Facebook, he didn't talk about it, he didn't rant about it, he didn't get fined, he didn't get anything, maybe a warning, maybe one of those yellow pieces of paper on there, and decided that he would take his garbage can. Nice, makes for a neater-looking neighborhood. As the council president has said, the ordinance has very few changes. The biggest one's going from one day, two-day pickup to one-day pickup. The rest of the stuff is really enforcement, which Irondale on the Move, the comprehensive plan that's been in the works for two years, really emphasized that the residents want it, from the surveys back from the residents, that surveys will want consistent enforcement of the ordinances. And so that's what has begun. I will tell you, from week one to week two, we're only two weeks into this too, by the way. So the sky, remember, the sky's not falling yet. We're two weeks into it, but from week one to week two, we saw a drastic reduction or a drastic improvement, if you will, in compliance. We went about a third, half to a third, of those who were out of compliance the first week came into compliance the second week. That's real tangible progress. I could give you specific numbers on that. We've had people on Facebook ranting and talking about it. I will tell you that we even looked at some of the numbers on that, and would you believe that 50 on one thread, Aaron, you responded to a bunch of these and giving out some good information, so thank you for that. On one thread, there were two people, there were 50 total responses on this one thread on Facebook. Of those 50, two people did 28 of the responses. It looked like a lot of activity. 50 responses and two people had 28 of those responses. We had another one that 56 responses on it, and one person had 20 of those responses. Some people just can't help themselves on there. One post was 191, and 191 responses on a post on Facebook, and three people made 82 of those responses.
Big brother.
Somebody needs, somebody needs to give life. Somebody needs to, somebody needs to have something else to do. I'm just saying, if you've got to comment, if you've got to comment 82 times for three people on something like that, it's a lot of repetition. But let me just, let me just say to you, here's the important thing on it. We're making progress, we're cleaning up Irondale. Everybody knows now, I think we've talked about it enough. Irondale on the Move talked about enforcing for two years. This council passed this ordinance update about three or four months ago. It's been talked about, it's been put in your garbage fields, which I'm learning that nobody looks at, by the way. It's been put in the garbage fields, it's been talked about at town hall meetings, it's been talked about in this council for several meetings, and we've responded to questions and all to the city's website. So the sky is not falling. I hope you believe that. Thank you.
Mayor, before you leave, why don't you make a positive comment about what Irondale's doing on behalf of Hurricane Lee based on Jefferson County, down in Red.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Actually, you can give me the details on the fire department is collecting, actually partnering with some of the other cities here, and our local fire department is collecting school supplies rather than, you know, they get all water or all toilet paper or whatever. Different cities are working together to collect certain types of supplies. So school supplies at the fire station one, you can drop those off, do it quickly, we want to get those to them as soon as we can. So it's our way of helping. I said in the prayer, you know, we, you know, we're all very passionate people about things that we believe in, but I want to say that more than that, we're very blessed to live where we live and very fortunate that we're able to send school supplies to help those that are less fortunate, because there's some terrible circumstances and situations there. So keep them in your prayers and participate as you see fit.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any department here reports tonight? Okay. Start off with Counselor London.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, there's a delay. That might have to be bad. Yeah. I don't know. You know what the deadline is?
They originally said the first, but you did extend it.
Extended. Okay. Okay. That's an element coming through, that's what I asked. First of all, good evening, everyone. So glad to be here. I just have a couple of things. I know we all like to serve, and Exchange Club is a great opportunity to serve. So if anyone is interested in joining Exchange Club, do me and David and John, George, George Hill. George Hill.
George Hill. John. John.
But Exchange Club is a great opportunity to serve. They do a lot of things in the community that we don't know about. So if you'd look for a place to serve, Exchange Club is a great opportunity to do that. Also, part of our concern, we're in a government meeting, that's a couple of things I'd like to bring to the council that I've been working on and hope that we could move that forward.
Counselor Bearden?
We're gonna skip over you now.
I'm going to order the agenda.
Well, UAB football is back. They had the first game, September 2nd, this past Saturday, against Alabama A&amp;M, and Irondale Senior Center took the busload of seniors to the game at a discounted rate, so if you missed out on that rate, you missed your good football game. I got to say, the White and I have season tickets, but Irondale Senior Center was there, had a good group, came with them. They even put "Welcome Irondale Senior Center" on the big scoreboard at one point. So just wanted to commend them for a good game. I think it was 38-7, UAB over Alabama A&amp;M. And that's the only thing I have tonight.
Counselor Spivey?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank the Irondale Police Department for putting on, the most recent cop shop was done at the Ventura Place Green Space. It was on August 24th, and it went on for a couple hours. People kind of came and went, but there was a good amount of people that sort of came through, came through that area. Once again, a nice little pocket park green space, whatever you want to call it, over there off of Ventura, behind the new auto service place on Highway 11. So highly recommend, get over there, check it out, and thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to miss that, Counselor Spivey, I was out of town, but I heard it was real nice. Just briefly, just wanted to announce the Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association meeting on next Tuesday, September the 12th, at 6:30 at the Senior Center. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Just a quick update, another positive for Irondale. For those of y'all that know Ms. Vicki, Vicki Manis at the library, she was voted by the Jefferson County Public Library Association as Paralibrarian of the Year. A very distinct honor for our city, and on top of that, there was also an award for Librarian of the Year, and it went to someone that lives in Irondale, even though she doesn't work in the Irondale system, and that's Pat Bryant. So we got two top awards from Jefferson County this year for our library and something to be commended. Ms. Vicki's been with us about 26 years now, I believe, and so I think anybody goes in regularly knows her pretty well, but she seems like she's always there working. The other thing is, there were seven Vulcans commissioned throughout the city of Birmingham. These were cast statues made out of fiberglass that were, I'm guessing about 10 feet tall, and they were be placed in various locations, and there is a lady in Trussville that's a member of the Irondale Arts Council who had other members of the Irondale Arts Council working for the past year to do the one that was commissioned from the zoo. And this was actually a glass mosaic that depicts things that Alabama's known for, everything from holly lily to the floor in Quanah, the different areas like states and things that inhabit our state. It was unveiled this past weekend, it took a year to complete. A lot of people in the Irondale Arts Council worked on that, and if you have to remember, this was done putting one tiny piece of glass on at a time, and that's what took so long. But if you're by the zoo, please go by and look at the names of those that worked on it or posted. And next, do we have any reports from boards and non-council committees? Ms. Schumaker. And there she can face the audience.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tella Schumaker. I'm executive director of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce, and I have a couple announcements. As the mayor mentioned, we have the 9/11 Remembrance and Thanksgiving Ceremony that will be held outside in front of City Hall Monday, this coming Monday, from 9:00, and it'll probably run until about 9:30. And this is Remembrance and Thanksgiving. We're remembering those who lost their lives and who were affected by 9/11 16 years ago. We're also honoring our first responders. So it will be our fire department, our police department, our SERC volunteers, it will be people who have graduated from Irondale Police Academy. So I encourage you to be there. It is a very uplifting, wonderful moment and a way to pay your respects to those who put their lives on the line every day for us. The second thing is Thursday, a couple of days later, on September the 14th, we'll have our Chamber September meeting. That will be 11:30 to 1:00 at Pine Tree Country Club. Donnie Ingram will be our speaker. He is a motivational speaker and performance coach, also an author, and he will be speaking about personal excellence and excellence in your business and private life. The mayor also mentioned National Night Out, October the 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock over here at Irondale Dico. There'll be, that is the police department, the chamber helps out of debt, also fire department. There'll be free food, free music, free games, free fun, so it isn't getting any better than that. And I just wanted to announce that Saturday, December the 9th, that will be our Christmas parade, and that will be from 11:00 until approximately 12:30 immediately following the parade that will run through the neighborhood. We'll be lighting the tree, the Irondale City Tree in front of City Hall, and I encourage you, if you cannot be in the parade, to be attending the parade. And I would love to see some floods, and I challenge everyone, yes, especially you, I made you look, all of you, to have a flood. Thank you.
Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda, the latest one that was submitted that's been passed out tonight?
I'll make a motion if the agenda be approved as submitted.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we will take comments on the agenda items on the, there are two items on the agenda. One, the resolution for the dispatch office agreement, and the other is for the referendum for property taxes. If you're going to come forward, please fill out one of the forms and back and hand it to the city clerk, and you limit your comments to your three-minute time limit. Does anyone have any comments related specifically to agenda items tonight? If not, we'll move right into new business. The first item in new business tonight is a resolution that's resolved, Resolution 2017 R-88, authorizes the mayor to execute a service agreement, outcome wireless need for the dispatcher office in the amount of $15,089.40. Any comments? General Mayor, this is really a house key tonight.
I have a question on that one. Since the contract is one year, can we include that in this item?
I mean, you can, but it's already in the agreement. But you all want to amend the resolution to say that you can't.
I mean, I know we have had some contracts that's come through in the years, but we also put it on the agenda also, that not to exceed one year. But it does come around each year, but.
If you'll amend the resolution to say it in somebody's second, we would have to do the amendment first before we.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, counsel, what do y'all think?
Since it's in the agreement, I don't have a problem with that.
But that's fine. We know what we got.
Do I have a motion then to accept the resolution as submitted?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017 R-88.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Second item, we're going to treat this like an ordinance as far as the passing process and the voting process tonight because of what it involves. And again, this is a vote to only authorize a referendum. We're not approving the tax increase. We are authorizing a referendum where the public can make their choice as to whether or not they want to do the increase in property taxes. Counselor Bearden?
There is no increase in the property tax. This just allows you as the public to vote if you want to increase the property tax. And if you would, Ms. Moreno, would you remind us what this money will be used for?
Part of that is that there's a lot of things already designated. We have infrastructure needs throughout the city, including roads. The Irondale on the Move initiative has a lot of cost associated with it, and at this point, the city is operating at a deficit, and we have our first projection of our 2017-18 budget, which would also come in with a deficit at the current rate we're going. We have other things we are looking at. We're looking at cost cutting, we're looking at other potentials that are out there to increase our revenue. But this is one source that will help us get to a point where we can start building up reserves, and at this point, we have about 1 reserve, which, about 3.4 million, which is not a full year of operations by any means if we got into a problem in the future. And again, Ms. Stewart, would you pull over the math on the average household? Again, this is, again, we're not passing this, we're just allowing the public to vote so that you can be in control.
Six mils on the average household. The median home price in the City of Irondale is $128,000. Therefore, six mil increase would be $77 a month. It works out to about.
A year.
A year.
I'm sorry, yeah. I really said that just to see who was listening. Realize that Ann and Cal was listening, because they kicked in, their head kicked in as soon as the $77 came out. So let me go through this again. On the home for $128,000, that's the median price for a home in the City of Irondale, the increase would be $77 a year, which equates to $6.42 a month, which breaks down to 21 cents a day.
But again, this will go to the public if this is passed. This will go to the public for a vote. It will be a vote that's held here at City Hall in a general election. And we are moving the process forward at this point because of the timeframe to get everything done in a timely fashion because of all the legal steps that have to be done in between.
James, what would be the date of the election if it's passed tonight, and when would it go into effect?
The election, proposed date for the election is January the 23rd of 2018. After the election, there is a 60-day probationary period once the election is given, so that puts it around, puts us around April. And then once it's approved, that information is submitted to the tax assessor's office. It has to be there before June the 30th of 2018. If it is enacted and we give the information to the tax assessor's office by June of 2018, we will see the first tax dollars October 1st of 2018.
And do mention how much Jefferson County takes for their little part of it for collections.
This proposed tax increase would bring an additional $1.3 million to the City of Irondale. However, there is about $200,000 in expenses that the county charges to collect these funds on a yearly basis, and they usually collect about 90% of the projected revenue for a fiscal year. So we're looking at a million dollars after they've taken their fee and collected successfully 90% of the taxes for the increase.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one. Please. And I guess I'll stand out on the island, like I've always been when I make this comment. Let me just make sure that everybody understands where I'm coming from. I'm not opposed to voting to send this to the community for a vote. The only concern that I have about this is the process that we have been through as far as implementing the property tax. As all the councils know on here, I've asked to do our due diligence as far as asking, what else could we do in order to generate revenue for the city? I've asked about an occupational tax. I've mentioned that. We haven't gotten any figures as far as occupational taxes concerned. Have we done our due diligence in implementing our economic development committee? Have we used our CEA? our due diligence in implementing our economic development committee, have we used our CEA like we need to, to go out and promote businesses or whatever the case may be, or generate business, what other plan do we have when this goes to the public to be voted upon and is passed, yeah, Councilman Moreno, he did mention something about infrastructure, yeah, that's right, we could use the money for that, we talked about the deficit, and we talked about some other things, which is good, I don't have any problem with that, but as far as the process, have we gotten the community's input as far as if we did send it to the, to the public, what would the community like to do, what would they like to see implemented with this property tax increase, I just wanted to put that out there, just so everyone could be clear as far as where I stand, I'm not against voting to send it out to the public, my concern is the process as far as how we did it, that's all, that's all I have.
And then again, before we vote, I'll just close with the comment I made prior, all we're doing tonight is sending it forward for the referendum, we already are projecting up to a one and a half million dollar deficit for the next budget period, and we'll have about like this budget period, about one point or, or one point two, this is just one step, we're going to have to look at cost, we'll have to see where we can do more efficiently, we're going to have to look at businesses, we're going to have to look at every aspect, including maybe considering occupational tax, this is just one small step, but we've got to get the city in financial shape, and we've got to be able to move forward, we want to grow and have our city in the shape we want it, getting a lot of comments on our road structure and other things that we need to do, and this is just one piece of that puzzle, it is a complicated puzzle, but because of the timing on this and the fact we will not see this till almost the end of two thousand eighteen, this is the time to move forward on this, and again, I think one of the members of our audience pointed out, if you've been working for somebody for twenty years and you've never gotten an increase, that would've been pretty bad, and that's basically what we've done, we've stayed at the same level, and we are like fourth or fifth from the bottom in the county, but again, that, the vote tonight is only to allow citizens to make that determination, and we will be doing a lot in between time because there's a lot of time between now and when we'll actually come to a vote, and at this point, we would open the mic for any comments.
I'd like to say that I oppose raising taxes on the citizens of the city of Irondale for any, any purpose, until we look at reducing the expenses that we have, with the exception of laying off employees, now, I do not, I would vote yes to allow this to go to a public vote, when it comes to the public vote, I would probably vote against it myself personally, because I do not think that it would be putting more burden on the citizens of the city of Irondale, but this will allow you as the citizens, and me as a citizen, to vote whether or not we want to raise our property taxes, but personally, I am opposed to, to raise taxes for, for the citizens, and I just want to let people know that, my yes vote in this will turn into a no vote, become a public, the public vote as I sit here and I stand now.
Okay, Bearden, if you would start us off with the process, please, we're going to treat this as an ordinance.
Make a motion that resolution number twenty seventeen R eighty-nine be considered read.
Second on that vote?
Second.
Do you have a vote? Go to your second.
No, we gotta have one.
Okay, no, it's just all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, make a motion to all rules, with the event, the immediate consideration and adoption of resolution number twenty seventeen R eighty-nine be suspended, any amount of consent be given for immediate consideration of said resolution.
Second.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Counselor Luke?
Yes.
And make a motion that ordered the resolution number twenty seventeen R eighty-nine be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The side that was passed, that will go forward, Stewart, pardon? And now we will open the floor for comments from the public. Have comments on non agenda items tonight, if you will, just please fill out your paperwork when you come forward, and please try to keep your comments within three minutes time, but thank you, and if you'll turn that around, so you'll be facing us, if you will, please, thank you so much.
Carrie Johnson, Montebello Road, on behalf of the citizens who live on Montecello Road, we would like to make appeal to the members of our government to install speed bumps on Montecello Road between Sixteenth and Batavia, and between Batavia and Montebello Road to reduce the speeding and running a stop sign that happens on a daily basis multiple times a day on that street, particularly during the morning and evening rush hour. We have a petition signed by all the citizens of Montecello Road, and until the speed bumps are installed, we would request a little bit more officer presence during morning and evening or showers to prevent some of the speeding, it's really quite excessive, we have children and small animals, pets that live on the street, and it's very dangerous.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
If you won't mind, if this is carried forward by the council to be put on the agenda, I would request that it be put on the agenda as a public hearing, because we've put up speed bumps before and heard from one side, and when the speed bumps are installed, we hear from the other side, so we'd like, we've had to remove the speed bumps, so I'd like, you know, this to be a public hearing, it's put on the agenda.
And then, just as a piggyback on that, I know, because I believe me and you have spoken about this specifically, I've talked to several of y'all about this, okay, perfect, there you go, me and the mayor spoke about this, and sir, if you could give us an update as far as what can report it?
Yeah, I think you all probably recognize, we had more police presence there, we ran traffic a couple of weeks there, and my, my first reaction to whoever it was that sent us the email was, how in the world can there be speeding in one block? We found out, and we, and we surmised even before we got there that they were running the stop sign, and probably wrote a dozen tickets or so for folks running stop signs, so we'll keep monitoring it, and we'll keep working with you on that, because we do recognize that as a problem.
You could probably make the city budget if y'all sat down there.
If, if we got as much off those tickets as people think we did, we would, but twenty dollars doesn't go very far.
This weekend alone, you, you could have really put it down.
No, we're convinced, we're with you on that.
We have city of Birmingham garbage trucks coming down our street.
Look at Birmingham's money too, then.
Yes.
Just to follow up, Councilor London, on that, you had questions earlier, did you get your question answered? Thank you, sir. Counselor Bearden, the city clerk reminded me, our process on that is to turn it over to Streets and Sanitation and the police department, they will do an assessment, get with the city engineer, and then we will get it on the agenda when they have their recommendations together, but we, we have to go through those first steps to get it on the agenda.
My request is if this comes to an agenda item, then we have a public hearing before.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing the legwork and getting the signatures.
Appreciate that, yeah, that, that goes a long way.
We, we've been through this, this is my third month up here to see about this, you told us to sign a petition that we would get you, the mayor would look at it and give us his opinion, how much longer will it take for him to give us his opinion?
I don't want to, I don't want to continue to go on this, as I'm sure other people have questions, but this is the first time the petition has been brought to us, and yes, I have spoken to several people over it, my recommendation was always about the petition, I spoke to the mayor on the twenty-fourth about it, that's when he made the comment about how many citations had been issued, so this is actually the first time we've received a petition, so now we will hand that information over to the appropriate department, and they will be making that call.
Can you tell us roughly how long it will take them?
I have absolutely no idea, that would be a better question for the mayor, he's going to need to get with that department head in order to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience tonight?
Is this, did you fill out paperwork, sir? This is non agenda, is that great?
Please, yes, come forward, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Want to be sure.
Yes, sir, you're right now.
I just had a general question equally for information, I'm not on Facebook, so I had a part of it, I wasn't the one that was answering. My name's Andy Wilson, and I live on seventeen twelve Fifth Avenue South, so I, I saw all of it, I did read the yellow things in the, in the bill with garbage about the increase, my question is just, I don't know enough about what other options we're discussing or why we're doing this, but it seems that we're cutting the service in half to keep the fees at where it was, and I understand that kind of the guys in our pickup garbage are in our can, are going and doing other things, but I just was hoping for maybe a little bit more clarification, if it is a, a situation that the costs have actually doubled since we're paying double the fee, have we looked into other options, so we can track these things out, are there, can anybody explain, is that an option, or is this just, we need to keep the money where it is, but make the workload off and do other things, is that something that you voted on, that I just wanted, generally, I know a lot of my neighbors do, I'm not breaking into the ready to make a secret, but.
Appreciate it, if you care to comment, because we would like to explore, I think, number one, I can make some quick comments, number one, the amount of refuse going through the city dump, excuse the expression, has not decreased, we're still sending the same amount, and that's a good part of our cost, so that is one reason the cost is not cut, plus that fee was determined based on what we're using, we're still using those resources to do other work, so nothing has really changed other than the frequency.
On top of that, Frank, you said we had paid around a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for part-time help last year, is that correct? That hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we paid for part-time help last year is now eliminated because the, the employees that were running the trucks four days a week are now two days a week, they're doing the work, the part-time employees are doing it, which saves the city a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars this year, if we hadn't, if we hadn't taken it back to two days a week, we would have hired that part-time help, we would have to rate the, the rate of the truck by about three or five dollars a month, so we'd actually save the city money and save the citizens money.
And addressing your other point, we did look at an outside service, and the cost was significantly higher than what we're able to do at the time.
I guess, I see your point that we're still paying the fee for the dump, but if anybody's taking stuff from the dump, we all understand the fees aren't cheap there, but the service that the citizens are still halfway it was before the frequency, and if we could pay three or four more dollars a month to cover the part-time help, we get garbage picked up two days a week, that, that may be preferable to cutting service and having to bust and keep it in the city.
That's it, okay, next, please, thank you.
I'm with the rapper, I was a sophomore on those two, on Montebello Road, and I'd like to talk about the garbage situation, um, again, this, I'm so sorry, I'm, the, I follow this, number one, where elderly residents align, it is difficult, we will bind those extra three mil super duper garbage bags, putting our garbage in it, putting it out of the street, and now, of course, we have to wrestle with the garbage can and put the bag in the garbage can and wrestle it out to the street, I just wanted to make you all realize that for senior citizens, this is not an easy, you know, okay, just, you know, do that, it's, we have to break the cans in because we didn't put any cans out, we just put the, the three mil garbage bags, which are very, very traumatic, I want to mention that, is there any way that the city could provide for a fee, someone who in a pickup truck could come up the driveway and pick up the garbage if we had an emergency and weren't able to do it ourselves, so, has the city ever thought about doing that?
I have a citizen in my district, just this past week contacted me about that, if you will get a doc, a, a letter from your doctor that states that you are not physically able to take it to the street, then the city will send a, a pickup truck and pick it up in your backyard, but we've got to have a letter from your doctor, and give it to Frank there, Public Works Director, and the city will pick it up in your backyard, and that can be.
Okay, I'm just thinking about if, for some reason, we couldn't do that, I'd also like to, I'm sorry, I'd also like to address the problem with the turn, left turn lane from Grantsville Road onto Carlisle Road, we, we had to have to do that, we nearly been killed any number of times by people who are coming right up behind us, you signal for a left turn, but you just talk through that intersection there, and you have a green line, you signal, signal for a left turn, but they're coming fast, and they don't realize you're going to turn, no matter whether you have your signal on or not, and there's, you know, there've been accidents there, and we, it would be so helpful if we could just ask the monastery to give a portion of that land that they are really kind of not doing much with, to put in a, a lane that went through onto, onto the interstate or wherever people are going.
Appreciate it, I think the, we'll follow up, I think part of our limitation in that particular arena is because of the state, not because of the monastery, but there is something being worked on in that particular area, can't, don't know what the outcome will be, because a lot of it depends on the state, but again, the mayor is aware of it, and he can follow up the public works.
Well, I have heard a rumor that you're considering closing Grantsville Road altogether from police to the interstate because of some car dealership.
No, ma'am, that's what you said, it's a rumor, if anything, they're thinking of why, but that's a statement, okay, thank you so much, Chris May, anyone else, please?
I'm sorry, I'm.
Please.
And my son, I've, I've been wanting to do a case for a while, I'm a little bit sorry, I like that, but, I understand being with the trash liner bags and everything the purpose was to make our neighborhoods look better and cleaner, my issue is my neighborhood, we have several properties that are both grown, one of them abandoned, one's still lived in, and these are almost taller than I am, and one of the neighbors has contacted them, he said there's really nothing we can do about it, and I think that's a bigger eyesore to our neighborhood than the trash cans out, the trash that's getting grown out of cans, most of myself and several other neighbors, when we walk the neighborhood, we pick it up and, you know, take care of that, but I think the issue of these houses with weeds or, uh, called, is a bigger eyesore for my neighborhood, and I know, one of them is a foreclosed house, and I understand, you know, it's probably a problem, you know, but it's right in the corner, nearby driveway starts, and it, it's here.
Thank you.
We just recently, just to kind of, we're going, how many did we approve? We, just recently, just to kind of, we're going, how many did we approve last week? Ten houses, something like that?
Some of them for the weed abatement.
Yeah, for weed abatement, so we are going through them, and, and I've got some to bring up personally as well. So we are going through those properties and taking care of those weeds.
The letters that have gone out, I actually spend most of my time in the crosshair and I think that's one of them. And there was actually a house, it's seven years down, where he lives, that is the same way, weeds are more than light.
Well, I've been cutting the grass, mixed over the beat because of this abandonment.
Yeah.
We've got a few specific addresses. We will pass them on. They'll be followed up. We're, we're treating that as a nuisance, and there is follow-up. There are certain requirements because it is private property, and we can't follow them.
And just as a public disclaimer, if you have an address that you want to talk about, I'm more, I think any of us are happy to hear about it, but as far as taking action on it, the mayor is the one who drives public works that actually does the, the cutting. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you so much for your comments. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, then you go ahead. No, no, go ahead. I'm just following up. Cindy Coyar, I think it's really important to have clarity.
We can hear.
I think, are you done? No.
I don't think it's on.
I'm quick to leave.
When you bang on, you hear it.
Button over top.
I didn't report and have clarity regarding the trash organs. I attended every meeting that you guys had, and you covered every milky cranny as far as public works, alternatives and so on. And as the mayor stressed, you are not cutting services as far as garbage collection goes. Residents are allowed to have three big cans, you know, on Mondays or Tuesdays or when, whatever their trash pickup is. So it's important to stress that. You're not cutting the service. You cut one day because you report you have, we're in a deficit, we've got to do what we can. And public works also noted that on that second day, there weren't that many people that were putting their trash out on that second day. And so we are, we have become spoiled, and we've got to cut where, where we can. And two days is unheard of in other places. And I know that we're not like other places, but we have to be realistic, and we've got to be much more fiscal as far as our responsibilities go. It's either up charged, as a gentleman says, I'm willing to pay more. Well, that's not fair to those that aren't putting their trash out two times a week. So we get down on it because some people want to have two-day-a-week collections? That's not fair. So those are the comments I want to make.
Thank you so much. Please.
Okay. I'll just stand right here. I don't think I can get over there. I may have one address here to follow up with the lady that's discussing the overgrown yards, and I have a question. In Lawrence Street in the city of Birmingham, it sits on the top of the cul-de-sac, the very top.
The top of the hill over here?
At the top of the hill, is that right?
Birmingham.
That's Birmingham.
The top of it is in, I think it's a house in downtown Birmingham.
Okay, and so leading up to it is not, is Irondale, correct? Do you know where in that block that it cuts off?
No, that street is in Birmingham. I don't know which, which house cuts off there.
Okay, because the street coming down, is that Lawrence Street? And there's a street, it has two different names, I think.
What you do, if you'll give the information for the mayor, passing Streets and Sanitation, they can check it out, make sure.
My comment on it is, this house is in Birmingham, but it is three houses at the very top of the hill that have been overgrown for two years. And my question is, or recommendation is, is there's a house midway up the block that's under renovation that's in Irondale, that it looks like a home renovator is doing? And my concern is, is the negative up there on the hill, why can't the city of Irondale make a phone call or file some sort of complaint against those yards that sit up there? They've been that way ever since I've driven that street.
It's Duke Avenue that's in the city of Birmingham, top of the hill, Lawrence.
Okay, Lawrence is in Irondale.
Again, key is, you'll get the exact address, the mayor, if you follow up.
Let me, let me, wait, do it. Let me make this, this, this quick comment. And we, we've had the person that's over the 311 Department in the city of Birmingham. She lives in the city of Irondale, so if you dial 311 and report it to the city of Birmingham, maybe they can do something about it.
Maybe they could, so it's up to us to do something about it.
Well, it's in the city of Birmingham.
Okay.
They, they don't know about it unless you tell them. That's what I tell them.
Right.
Because they don't live in that neighborhood.
Because it's, it's, uh, it's surrounded by Irondale, and you can't get to it unless you go through Irondale, and you would think that, you know, it's directly attached to the property.
Not, not cutting to your time, but since the time's there, we'll follow up on it appropriately. That's the main thing, and mayor.
Shannon Edwards, I live at 505 20th Street South.
We've got a, we've got a section of Irondale, you gotta go through Mount Hood to get to.
Okay.
Also, on the city's website, there's a PDF, a very good PDF of where our lines are at, and then we'll, you can drill down to the street addresses and see specifically what you're dealing with.
Okay. Well, I was beginning with.
See, see if you have similar aspects, because Birmingham and Irondale, we've been and out, so.
Oh, all right.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience tonight?
I have another subject, so I'll wait and stand up again.
You've had your three minutes.
I'll have to come back another.
Go ahead, please.
I don't have the exact address, and I think what you're probably going to tell me is that it's not in Irondale, but there are two pieces of property on Overton Road between Buckthorne and the Architect's Place that are completely overgrown. I mean, you can't see, there's, there are houses there which you absolutely cannot see in the street.
I think the same rule applies. If you'll please get those exact addresses to the mayor's office, he'll pass it on to Streets and Sanitation.
If it's in Jefferson County, there's not anything we can do yet, is there?
Probably not. Just as a general statement, let me just say, if you have nuisance issues like these that were brought up, that's what we go on is by the address. So, so find the address. Whatever you've got to do to find the address, because if you tell us it's, it's down this street, taking a lamp, and it's either the second or the third house, we're not going to find it. So give us the address, then we can GPS it, we can tell you whether it's in Irondale or Birmingham or Jefferson County.
These houses are abandoned. I don't think they even had any, uh, on this city, so I got a process to say. And I have a question on garbage pickup, things like, um, that old grill, that can still be picked up?
Is it metal, metal grills? Get it picked up.
That happens a bit, but the mayor pointed out earlier on the trash, the truck sergeant running the city makes a round, so there's no given date, they might be in your neighborhood, but over a two-week period, they're normally able to cover the city, just depending on how much they have to pick up in that process.
And one more quick question. What is the ordinance on not abandoned, but parked cars on the street that have been there and not moved for a year and a half? They have a driveway with cars in it.
They might go with the mayor with it.
If, if my understanding is that if they're not moved on a daily basis, they're abandoned or?
They're not registered. They can't tell whether they rent or not, if they don't have a permit, if they're, have flat tires, or block, on block, those sorts of things.
Okay, they're just walking the driveway.
Well, if it's walking your driveway, then you report that, all sorts of things.
Follow the fire emergency number. Thank you.
And then Steve, we have had a few people ask multiple questions. I know that you had a second. I'd like to give this one.
Oh, gee, you're turning out. Yeah.
I've given, uh, a copy of this, um, handed to you here at home. Of course, thank you. David, you're my councilman in my neighborhood, thank you for allowing me to speak. His name's Shannon Edwards, I live at 505 20th Street South. I'm here today to address stormwater runoff, the water source that's flooding my property as well as adjacent property. The water source is from five houses, an apartment complex, and an alley that those houses feed into. It comes down a city alley, it crosses a city street. The city street was repaved approximately five years ago on 20, I think it's 21st Street South. The gutter was designed to capture the stormwater. The gutter was approximately 18 to 24 inches deep, and it captured this water directing it to 20th Street South. The stormwater then goes down all the way to the end of the block to the storm sewer where that's located. I think that's 22nd. Five years ago, the homeowners complained when this road on 21st was repaved, and nothing was ever done to address the water issue. I purchased my house in 2014, and of course, it was a drought then, and I didn't realize of this water. In January of 2015, it began to rain, and I noticed this water pouring in from the neighbors. And so I decided to watch during a rainstorm, and I noticed that it wasn't coming from his gutters, it wasn't coming from his driveway downstairs.
Do you have this in some form you can transmit to the mayor for follow-up?
Sure.
I can.
That'd probably be more appropriate.
So with the Georgia pick or the?
I'd get short-circuited, the, the secretary's already been, they're already talked to.
I bet, it was okay, yes.
So he's already.
I hope we can.
Okay. That's the main thing, it's only, no, no, no problem. Main thing, you've got to don't give in front of the council. Thank you.
So just, did you get a drink or issue?
He went out Friday, and he collected a message for her on Friday.
Thank you.
He straightened it up.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Please.
I just have one question. Why do we have to have Jefferson County collect our taxes instead of us collecting the taxes so that we don't have to pay them where that order of amount was?
That is a setup in this county region. They are the only ones that can do it. We have no option to collect our own taxes.
And we can't change it and set it up that way?
You look at every city in the county, they all go to Jefferson County to follow the act.
Is it a percentage they take?
She thinks.
It's, it's one of those things, if it's a kind of a catch-22. You are not allowed to collect your own taxes in any individual city for that particular piece.
Sir, what was your name?
David Smith.
David Smith. It was on four.
Who said that?
Jefferson County.
I'm saying that statement at some point.
That's all it is.
They, they gave the counties the right to collect taxes, not cities, of that nature. Yes, ma'am. Please, ma'am, thank you.
My name's Dorothy McAdory.
Ma'am, if you'll face us, please.
Face you?
Yes, please.
Dorothy, I'm like the mayor. Dorothy McAdory, I live at 5232 Dresden Road in Irondale. I stand here tonight only because I'm hurt. I live in this lovely city of Irondale, but I'm hurt. Well, I'll just read this quickly. As a longtime citizen and resident of Irondale, Alabama, I'm quite upset to have been cussed out by the tenant slash owner of the shared service station at 5400 Beacon Drive, Irondale, Alabama. As a supporter of the businesses in Irondale, I stopped in the shared service station for gas. Upon completion, the gas pump displayed red receipt inside. I went inside to get my receipt, the tenant asked, can I help you? I replied, the pump said to come inside for your, for your receipt. He asked which pump? I replied, pump number three. Before I could finish, he started screaming that he had eight pumps and followed up cussing. When I could get a word in, I said, I said pump number three. And the cussing continued, and that I was to respect him. I started to walk away, then turned again to ask him for my receipt. He refused to give it to me and started cussing again. I said, okay, I would just have to call the police. The tenant cussing told me to call the blank blank FBI. I returned to my car and called the Irondale Police and shared files calling. I then called my husband to share the problem. He and the Irondale Police arrived about the same time within about 15 minutes. The police went to the pump to verify my complaint. Then he went inside the station and requested my receipt. The tenant never recognized me, but instead gave the police the receipt. I requested that a complaint be filed. The police did not file a claim because he said no crime had been committed. There may not have been a case number assigned, but it was most definitely a crime that was committed. I must say that I am one upset African-American female citizen that feels no one should be subject to that kind of disrespect from a business owner operating in the city where they reside. I will not be patronizing this business anymore. Sadly, I spoke to someone in another nearby business as I was gathering information from media, and was told that the owner was very rude and that, that her mother stopped going there about a year ago because he cussed her out. That tells me that a woman before me had been treated in like manner. It happened to me today. Will it happen to you or your young adult daughter or granddaughter next? And I did try that on media.
Thanks for your comments.
This is the shared station at 5400 Beacon Drive in Irondale.
Is that across from Sam's?
Yes, across from Sam's.
Have you posted that?
I did post it on, I thought it was Irondale, I was like, what I did?
That's the question.
Yeah, yeah, because was, was it the owner or was it a worker that just worked in?
I can't tell you who it was, but I know that it was a person doing business in, in that, in that, um, in that service station who was behind the desk and asking the question and saying that. And no one should be subjected, that you come over here from somewhere else, and they're the people that support your business, you cuss them out? No, I'm hurt about that in this loving, in this loving city called Irondale, Alabama.
I'll talk to that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Second, on favor? And your vote. Thank everyone for being here.